May I try to take the fifth up to the order with the plea stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the physical, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item on the agenda will be approval of the minutes from the May 18th.
Mayor make the motion to approve the minutes from the April 22nd or also the May 18th.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes with the clerk please call over.
Gillum?
Yes.
Malott?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Steig?
Yes.
Next item is statement of bill paid in the amount of three twenty-two, seven forty-nine, ninety-six.
Mr. Mayor make the motion to pay the bills in the amount of three twenty-two, seven forty-nine, ninety-six. Second?
It has been moved and seconded to approve the statement of bills with the clerk please call over.
Gillum?
Yes.
Malott?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Steig?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Before we move on to the next item, I'm going to read a proclamation. Proclamation of the City of Edwardsville, Kansas, whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service and whereas the members of the emergency medical services team are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to the quality of emergency care from medical improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services have grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and out-of-the-hospital medical care providers, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams or the career or volunteer engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance the lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of the emergency medical services provided by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I John McTaggart, Mayor of Edwardsville, Kansas, in recognition of this event do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st to 27th, 2017, as Emergency Medical Services Week with the theme EMS Strong, Always in Service. I encourage the community to observe this week with proper programs and ceremonies and activities. We have some magical, we have members of our fire department in house tonight. Thank you gentlemen very much for your work. Thank you. Next item will be request for comments from the public. Next item will consider Resolution 2017-10 regarding the initiation of eminent domain proceedings relating to the LTC sewer project. This may require an executive session.
It may, it does not necessarily require an executive session, but it certainly questions and I'd be lucky to discuss. The item you have before you, Resolution 2017-10 is the first step of a two-part process when we use M and M main. This is specifically related to what we refer to as the LTC sewer system, the gravity portion of that line that will go from 110th Street to the lift station that was already in place or being finalized. We have had successful negotiations with all the properties except for one, and at this point they have not accepted the offer or offers that have been made to them which have been basically in the same amounts and types of the other offers that have been made in that area. So again, the first step in that process is we have to basically initiate it and have the engineer give us the legal descriptions for those properties. Those are stamped by the engineer, returned to the city clerk, and then following that we move to the second step, which is actually an ordinance specific to the property or properties in question. And at that point, if the ordinance is passed, then it is filed with the district court, and there's actually a court case that stems from that. Same process we've used in the past. Very similar, the resolution looks a little bit different. The company that's doing the work for us is the Sycamore and Erstens, they kind of specialize in right-of-way work, and so they drafted this particular resolution. So it's a little bit different than maybe what you've seen in the past. I would be more than happy to answer the questions. I will say that the particular property owner is represented by council, and so it limits a little bit some of the discussions that can go on between the city and the landowner at this point, so represented by council, those discussions now have to occur directly with their legal counsel. Again, I'd be happy to answer the questions, and it is the first step of the process. So negotiations will continue, assuming there's responses, but I mean, there has been offers made, and to date they haven't responded, I would say, basically to the offer.
How many other landowners?
This is the only one, there's only one outstanding. The other landowners between basically 110th Street and the lift station have all agreed to terms and have, I think they've all closed on all the other property. Some of those are related to the developments that they did through the planning process, so they have indeed those, and some of them have been acquisitions. There's four acquisitions in that area, not including the acquisitions that we made for the lift station and for the horseman on the opposite side of the highway.
Does the entire process take ninety-nine hundred twenty minutes?
It can, yes. Because the process and legal counsel can explain it maybe better than I can, but so we have this, and then two weeks from now, we pass an ordinance. At that point, prepare the case, and I assume that takes a few days, a week or so, file it in the district court. Then the district court has to have a hearing to appoint the appraisers, and then three appraisers, disinterested appraisers, and then I believe they generally have about thirty days.
They have about thirty. And then they'll submit their report, and that'll be the value.
Does the city pay for the appraisers?
It's actually, if I recall right, is it shared between the two parties? Or is the city paid for? I couldn't remember. So yes, it is a cost.
We've done every combination process, same process, pretty good, we might talk about it.
But basically, this is a broken link in the chain, right?
Yes.
Of the whole process, of the whole project?
And what we did happen in the past, a couple different times, from a body combination, we got a case settled, sort of, thereafter.
Would this resolution maybe speed that process up some?
No, that, we have to do that. We have to do resolution first.
Since there's not an agreement made right now, the resolution has to be the first thing to do.
Yes, sir.
Would that make the landowners a little bit more anxious to deal more?
No idea.
Can you explain just a little bit to me what the resolution actually is, come and start the process?
Yeah, so basically what the resolution does at this point is that the council has determined that the land is needed for public improvement, that is, this sewer project, and that the use of, that those properties for easements may need to be condemned, and that you're authorizing me to have an engineer or a surveyor prepare these legal descriptions. I would say we basically know what those legal descriptions are because we've been trying to negotiate this in this process. I think as we've spoken past, some cities will take, and at the very beginning of a project, will just do this piece of it and just kind of get it out of the way, and so they kind of initiate the process the day that they decide they're going to do a project. Others, and I think the more common, is you know where you've prepared plans, what kind of easements and rights and what you need. You typically get that done, you negotiate with the property owners, and then if you're not able to come to a solution, then you really focus on, you know, those views that you really haven't, you know, you can't get settled for. And so we typically do it this way, but you may see sometimes in the paper of a city doing, they'll have fifty or sixty or seventy properties listed out there, because they just kind of do the whole process of condemnation and then start the negotiation. I think at least the people I've talked to that work in right-of-way prefer this method because when you start off, they say, we're going to condemn your property now, let's negotiate, that what else it makes it harder for them, and potentially raises the price. I don't know if we're back, but it starts off less of a negotiated process and more of a legal. So we typically take this negotiating process first.
Mr. Mayor, make the motion to adopt a Resolution 2017-10?
It has been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2017-10. Would the clerk please call over? Do you have a question to add?
So negotiations, because it's kind of unclear.
Okay.
It sounds like negotiations are with the city.
Because the easements are with the city.
Okay, but negotiations have occurred between the developer and the, I don't know.
The right, there's, yeah, there's a right-of-way agent that has been used, but all the documents and papers, all the easements are for it. But yes, they have compensated, they have paid the compensation associated with that, and will pay the compensation associated with these costs.
So I would like to have seen or heard from them, being the developer, why it is that they haven't been able to resolve this. Is it because we're just at number differences, or hey, we just don't want your sewer to come through? You know, I mean, and to me, there's a difference.
Well, so what I can say is, is that relative to the number that's been offered to them, that's never been rejected. So the number's been out there for some time. The issue has really been around, for the most part, a stock tank that's on the property, and our sewer easement goes by that stock tank, and it was determined that the tank would need to have the water drained out of it and make sure that there was other water resources available for cattle and livestock, which was provided by agreement that that would be put there, and that obviously any damages that would happen to the stock pond or to the damage to the stock pond obviously have to be repaired as part of the agreement. At some point, I would say fairly recently, within the last thirty days, maybe less, the particular individual retained the council, and pretty much the discussions at that point have kind of changed to monetary issues, but there's been no offer, nothing counter on the offers as to what they go to fair market prices. Yeah, this doesn't terminate those negotiations, it stops the negotiations. Again, we've had similar cases like this. Quite honestly, in my time here, we always often will come to a solution. So I don't know that it's, there may be some price issue, but I think more of the issue is this stock pond, if it's damaged, how will the repairs be fixed? Which may or may not quite also be part of a condemnation type suit because it looks at value of land prior to, you know, improvements, so, and that's how it looks at it. So I don't know if that answered all of your questions. If there are any specifics, I would say we probably need to go to the executive session.
Sir, are no further questions, would the clerk please call over?
Gillum?
Yes.
Malott?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Steig?
No.
Adam? Yes.
Next item on the agenda will be consider recommendations of approval from the Planning Commission regarding MC Electric expansion.
If you don't mind, I'm going to step up here and play Dave Knopf this evening. He had an issue come up, and so he asked me to cover this. This is what we refer to as the MC Electric expansion. There are three elements to this, that being a final plat or replat actually, the property, a preliminary plan, and a final plan. As we noted in the past, it will require separate motions for each one of those items. This application was filed on March 6th for this property, which is at the corner of 96 in Wood End Road. The address is 2701 South 96. They have an existing building on site that they use for their warehouse and storage. They need to expand that slightly by about 2,300 feet, and so that's what has come forward as part of the proposal. As a result of that, it did impact, there was an old property line shown on a previous plat, which actually went through the existing building that's there, the primary building. So obviously, the setback line is in conflict, and that's really what's causing the replat. Let me make sure I've got all these things here. I know Dave does a much better job of this, so he wrote me some notes. The property is zoned I-1 industrial non-hazard, and the use is part of that. There were preliminary plans submitted to DRC, there was comments, those were returned to us on prior to the April 19th Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission did review that, and they did approve all three of these items and made recommendations for approval. We are comfortable with the right-of-ways and the other easements that are in this particular location, and they have provided one of the comments that you'll see in the packet, had to do with landscaping, and those were submitted on May 17th, and related to the landscape in the extension concrete pad area, and so those items have been addressed. I will say, one of the things about this building, it was one of the last buildings that was built before we implemented some of the new standards related to buildings, and I know we've had a couple of these in the past where we're trying to, you know, do the best we can to make this work. This particular one will not have any masonry on it, but the metal of it will come in time, which was there before, which is kind of a two-tone, got a darker color on the bottom of the panel, and a little bit lighter on the top, but they have added additional landscaping to help screen that from the roadside. We do have Will Anderson with PAC Roads, who is representing the client tonight, if we have any questions of him. That, I would be happy to answer questions. Again, you have three recommendations, one for the final plat, which basically has two comments, which are preliminary standard comments, and then the preliminary final plan, in which there are five comments, and some of those have been addressed, we would still recommend that you approve with those comments, so that they're on the record.
Is this three separate actions?
There are three separate actions, one for the final plat, one for the preliminary plan, and one for the final plan.
Mr. Mayor, make the motion to adopt 2017-11 final plat for the MC Electric building at 2701 South 96th Street.
Second? It has been moved and seconded to approve the final plat.
Question?
Well, I'm going to read that, then.
I think it has to be with comments.
With the two stipulations.
It's been moved to second to adopt the final plat for the 2017-11.
With stat comments.
With stat comments. Excuse me. Would the clerk please call over?
Gillum?
Yes.
Malott?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Steig?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Next item will be considered terminate the contract with custom cut lawn care and authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with white lawn and landscape for mowing and groundskeeping services for the Edwardsville Cemetery.
Mr. Mayor, member of council, on our April 10th meeting this year, approved custom cut lawn care for the mowing contract at Edwardsville Cemetery. Since that time, the contractor approached the city and requested to be let out of the contract citing some difficulty in keeping up with the workload. I think they may have just put in for the work and did their best, and for the time that we had them, they kept up all right, but I think it was hard for them to keep up with the other commercial contractors they had who were on. They requested to, for the contract to be terminated, and since that time, city staff reached out to the second little spitter during the original bid process, White Lawn and Landscape, and have, through the spending authority of the public works director, they have performed one mow and are planning to do another mow this week before the Memorial Day weekend. The per mow amount for white lawn and landscape is $540, and like I said, it's performing work under the budget authority of the public works director for this time, but in order to be approved for the contracted terms for the original bid process, they will need to be approved by this group after canceling the current contract with custom cut lawn.
You want two motions?
I think we can get it done with one motion.
Mark the script, there's one. So the motion would be terminate the contract with custom cut lawn and approve the contract with white lawn and landscape.
I would note that White Lawn and Landscape also is a local company here. They are located down in Plaza West, and actually, one of the buildings being built in Plaza West Two will be their current location, or leasing out and acquiring that building.
They also have a couple of cemetery accounts in Kansas City, Kansas, so they're familiar with the kind of work that they level.
Does this relinquish city staff from doing any maintenance work or going to work up there?
Since that time, city staff, our public works staff, and our part-time seasonal parks employees have gone out and seeded and leveled some of the graves that were in need of that. I think they did 26 sites.
Twenty-six plots?
Twenty-six plots, yeah, and plots in total. So I think the idea is that, you know, we're still going to be open to those kind of opportunities when they're, when it makes sense for our staff to do that. But the white lawn and landscape is probably a little bit more equipped to handle some of the other groundskeeping issues that custom cut wasn't due to the size of their staff.
Mr. Mayor, make the motion to terminate the contract with custom cut lawn care and award that contract for the cemetery mowing to white lawn and landscape.
Second? It has been moved and seconded to terminate the contract with custom cut lawn care and to enter into a contract with white lawn and landscape for mowing for the grounds of the city Edwardsville Cemetery. Are there any further questions, would the clerk please call over?
Gillum?
Yes.
Malott?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Steig?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda will be consider authorize the city manager to enter into contract with Mackinany Construction, Inc., for reconstruction of 102nd Street, Kansas Avenue, Richland Ave.
Thank you, Mayor, and I will address this item and possibly public works director may have some additional comments. This is the contract to reconstruct the 102nd Street in Kansas Avenue where we terminated the last contract up through the intersection of Richland Ave. I will say that all the right-of-way acquisition is completed for that, and so we won't be bringing any items to you ready to that. Utilities are probably in the relocation process now. We did put this bid out, and we used a little bit different process. We used what's kind of referred to as the plan room. Sam did a great job of getting that kind of B days for us, so basically what happens is the plan room, it goes in, and then they send it out to, you know, thousands potentially of bidders out there, and so it gets a very broad spread, and any kind of change order or communication, it's all kept within that process. Our cost was relatively inexpensive to do that, about $75, compared to the plan, with the plans up. The bidders then buy sets of plans at a set price, plus they will buy them electronically downloaded one time at a fee where they can get CDs, or if they want hard compensation, they can eat that. So it puts the cost basically to the bidders. As you will see here, we had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight bidders on this project. That's more than we typically get on our K-5.
That was unusual.
So I think we got a very good group of bids. The low bidder is Mackinany, and as you know, they're located in Shawnee, they've done work here in the past. Their low bid is at $326,817. The engineer had estimated it at $432,300, excuse me, $630. Like all these bids, they are line item bids, so units go up or down, with reason, you just adjust. So we stood by, you know, 120 tons of asphalt, so 110, whatever that tonnage for the unit price is, so you kind of manage the tons on there. Again, speaking with Mackinany, they are basically ready to go. Obviously, there's some time, but they got to get their bonds in place, and insurance and all those things which they have, where they got to get it all to the city and do a kickoff meeting. Sounded to me, they were ready to go as quickly as possible.
The very next question?
Yes.
Elliot with Mackinany.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't realize we had somebody here with, somebody that we have represented from Mackinany if there's any questions. So really, I would have two actions that I would like you to take tonight, and should have been a little more clear here, but the contract would be Our cost was relatively inexpensive to do that, about $75,000, including the plans. The bidders then buy sets of plans at a set price, plus they will buy them electronically, download it one time, have a feed where they can get CDs, or if they want hard copies, they can eat that. So it puts the cost basically to the, to the bidders. As you will see here, we had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight bidders on this project. That's more than we typically get on our K dot.
That was unusually high, wasn't it?
So I think we got a very good group of bids. The low bidder is Mackinac, and as you know, they're located in Shawnee and done work here in the past. Their low bid is at $326,817. The engineer had estimated it at $432,300, excuse me, $630. Like all these bids, they are line item bids, so units go up or down, and the reason is just adjust. So we stood by, you know, 120 tons of asphalt, so 110, whatever that tonnage for unit price is, so you kind of manage the tons on there. Again, speaking with Mackinac, they are basically ready to go. Obviously, there's some time, but they've got to get their bonds in place and insurance and all those things which they have, where they've got to get it all to the city and do a kickoff meeting. Sounded to me, they were ready to go as quickly as possible.
The very next question.
Yes.
Elliot with Mackinac.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't realize we had somebody here with, somebody that we have represented to Mackinac if there's any questions. So really, I would have two actions that I would like you to take tonight, and we should have been a little more clear here, but the contract would be with Mackinac Construction in the amount of $326,817. Again, that might adjust on a unit price, but we get those pretty close. And then I would also ask just the authority to retain VHC Roads to do the inspection services, which is estimated at about $52,826. We already have a contract with them under a material and hourly type of contract, which is how this is handled, but we do anticipate VHC Roads being the inspector on the project. They also would be inspector on Kansas Avenue.
What's their fee for the Kansas project?
I don't know that I recall, and I don't remember. About 12%. Forget the state, it's actually with the state is how they do it, I mean, so it gets built into the project, generally around 12%. Smaller projects, it's, you know, receding wise, it's a little bit higher, but we're going to try to control that, but we have a little more control over that on the K dot project, because K dot requires, you know, anytime the contractor's on site, the inspector has to be on site. On a city project like this, of this size, that's not necessary. If they're out there just cutting graves and demo and stuff, I mean, might stop by for two hours, but we're not going to have them there for eight hours. But when they're putting down asphalt, putting concrete, they've got, you know, testing being done, putting in storm sweaters, things like that, and they'll be on site.
How much of this is out of the city, the city's paying for, and then how?
All of this is out of the city bond funds, 100%. There's no federal or state dollars in this project.
I was thinking that I remember that there was something that we attached to a project. I don't know why I was thinking that.
What we do get.
We're just spending $326,000 to go 600 feet.
I don't remember what the total fee is, but yeah, through Richmond Avenue, yes. The original project was about $2.1 million on the base that we just finished. 2.1, 2.2, back then. It's rough numbers. This is from the 2015 bonds, I believe, that we issued, and we issued it for, as you recall, initially, it was issued for 102nd Street for the preparation of plans and acquisition of right-of-way, and that's decided not to be going with acquisition of right-of-way, and referred to this project, and then there's still money that was left in there for the same purpose for South 98th Street, which hasn't been allocated to that project or any project at this point.
I received several calls from folks that live on 102nd Street this week, animals, about, they feel that this moving forward is just, and they were at the public meeting that we had at the community center, where they expressed their views. They feel like this is just a step closer to getting sidewalks and curbs and what they don't want to see going up 102nd Street. I don't know why, I was thinking that there was some federal money that was attached to this. I don't know that I ever remembered. I do remember that I voted no on, because I think there's a lot of other places that we can put $326,000 in repairs in our city on streets and not on, going 600 feet. You know, I understand that there's a, I looked at it today, I understand that there's a, some concern about the way that it's, the Richland and the way that there's kind of a drop off down off of 102nd Street, but I think that to put $326,000 towards where a couple guardrails are taken care of it, I don't know, I would definitely not favor that. We've got a lot of other streets.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, this is bond money that was set, that was bonded for this project and cannot be used for road repair?
I asked that question, that is, I asked, well.
Go ahead.
Whichever, whoever, not a woman. Yeah, so I initially asked that, and I was told exactly that, what you just said, and then I got a response back from Mike, that later on, that said we could use that money anyway.
Well, we can't, so the bonds, so when we issued the bonds, we identified projects, and we said, basically, 102nd Street was one of those projects, 98th was one of those projects, and I believe the rest of the money was, was for Kansas, for our share of Kansas Avenue. And generally, as long as we stay within those project boundaries, we're okay. If we want to change those, so if funds are going to be used somewhere else, and it does have to be, because it's bonded money, it is limited to which roads it can be spent on, as it is. So all of 102nd Street would be an eligible fund, 102nd Street would be eligible, 98th, 102nd.
So 98th Street.
I think Richland is on our, so we, probably two years ago, we went through and all those streets that met, being a collector street, we named those so that they could be eligible for the use of bond money. But we issued the bonds for certain projects. If we choose to use it for another project, then we would have to go through a process to amend that. So generally, you want your projects kept with the product, you know, there, but can it be amended? There is a process, and I would have to refer to our, you know, legal counsel to do that, but just as if we have, so if you have excess funds, say you build your project and you've got money left over, and you have another project that you want to do, and it's not already within kind of the scope of your project, so let's just say you had excess money left over, and you wanted to go, you know, work on 110th Street, well, we would have to go through a process to reallocate those dollars. And it can be done, I mean, it's not undoable, but it takes time. You know, I'm going to say here, I mean, we've gotten to going through this process of acquiring rights of way, doing the plans, and doing these various things in order to get this out of bid for, for award.
Well, we haven't spent any money yet. So, I mean, three, we, that was about $326,000.
We haven't spent $326,000.
And I think, this is me, and I'm, if we're looking at, I would like to see what it would cost us to bring Richland into an acceptable level, where we feel like it's safe, and people can traverse it, and there's not any dangers, and then we revisit where we think that this additional money should go. If we're looking at the big picture, and we think that Kansas Avenue and any, if there's development to go north, or, you know, 98th Street is a street that travels from State Avenue all the way through our city south, and I, and I just think that we should look at other ways to attach that money, and it would still be attached to that same project, 98th Street. That going north from Kansas Avenue up to the bridges is unbelievably dangerous.
Well, and I would just add, I mean, certainly, that's the, that's the council's direction. I mean, we have acquired the rights of way, we have utilities in relocation, relatives, at least the people that live there, and I realize not all the way up the road, there, you know, was support around this project, I mean, during our discussions. I mean, we have put it out, you know, we did put out the bid, and obviously, we always have a right to reject any and all bids, but, I mean, we have gone through the processes up to this.
I can remember a conversation we had, that the reason why we had this money is because we had some favorable pricing on the Kansas Avenue project, that's why we ended up with some money left over. I remember that conversation you had with council, where it's discussing the possibilities of this.
Because we originally, again, when we did the bonds, we had set aside $250,000 for the design of 102nd Street and acquisition of Eastland and Right-of-Way, which we did the plans for that whole section through there, and I think it was around $30,000 to $90,000. And we obviously didn't acquire any of those, we did acquire E-Ride of Way through there that way. And we did $250,000 for 98th Street, basically, paid 32 up about, I want to say, less than a mile, maybe a half mile there, because there's going to be some relocation of water lines, and that bridge that's down there, you know, any number of things through there. And the remainder, and I want to say that, that was around $1.3 million, I'm taking it off a little bit, was for our match of the Kansas Avenue, and that came in under what we expected that to be. So some of it is out of that, some of it's out of the money that was only allocated to, quote, 102nd Street. There's still funding, I don't remember the exact number, but I believe, maybe $400,000 or so left in the bond fund that's not allocated to a project at this point. That was a rough number, so.
400 plus the 300?
Yeah, I mean, we show this as allocated, but yeah, but yeah, about, after, if this was spent, there's still about 300 to 400,000. I don't know if anybody do remember, I know we looked at the numbers, but.
No, I think it was like, I think it's about 400.
About, that's right, about 400,000 that we, that we have spent on 98th Street, that's still sitting in that bond fund, that's not allocated for the sewer. So the bond money all gets put together into a large, to our bond fund, and then we break out projects, obviously.
If I don't mean by saying that Richland doesn't need addressed, I understand the concerns, I can see, I can see where you'd definitely go, yeah, you know what?
Well, I've said to people on Richland, yeah, I could, I can go farther as the.
Go back on 98th Street from Kansas Avenue and meet somebody coming over the top of that hill, and there's no room for two cars to pass each other.
Well, that's going to take a lot of work, I mean, I mean.
Well, so did Kansas Avenue.
Yeah, well, I'm not saying it can't be done. And again, I think that's just, I'm not here to per se advocate, evidence to say, they want to do the process at this point. That is our recommendation from staff, to the council to decide if that's the proper direction.
When we first started that whole project, it was going to go from 435 to 100th Street, wasn't it? And then it came up to where we could work all the way to 102nd, and then it came up to where we could go north to Richland, right?
Well, initially, we wanted to get around to Richland, and the original funding, we couldn't get there, so we submitted our project application that took us basically to where the project ended. The, and so we had about $1.3 million in federal funding. So at that point, we said, we'll come down to, we'll shorten our project, come down to about 100th Street, a little past 100th Street. Then I believe the city of Roland Park had a project that had $400,000 allocated to it. They withdrew, and we were successful in getting that $400,000 added to our project, because our project hadn't been bid yet, but yeah.
But that was part of the project to the east.
And then that got us to where we're at.
But we started, basically started at 435 and went west on the improvement.
Yeah, we already started at 94th Street, because that part from the bridge to 94th Street was basically just a repave, a little bit of curb work, was basically was repaving, so if we would have had to cut something, we could have potentially cut that, but it was such a small portion of the project in order to.
So this bid here would actually complete the project north to Richland?
Yes.
And this, and how far would that money go if we went north on 98th Street? What would that money do?
The first problem we get there is, we got, we got a bridge structure to get over, and.
So it wouldn't.
And that big hill, I mean, so I don't know.
Touch that project, Ben.
Would it get us to the bridge, I mean?
Just for the low, the low bridge?
Probably through there, I mean, if we had added it into a project, it might have got us to there, I mean, in reality, so. Now, do I believe that small projects tend to cost a little more than, you know, if I could put a bigger project together, your unit costs are probably going to be better, generally speaking. I think that's fair to say. But this isn't a repave, I mean, this isn't a repave, it is a, you know, completely tear out. Good thing is, there's not much grade work in this. Actually, I think there's excess material, but there's not a lot of cutting and raising of grades like we have in Kansas Avenue. There's no major storm structures that we're, that we have to work with, so.
What is the process? Like, if we decided to move ahead with this portion of it, and take the $400,000 and reallocate it?
Right.
What's the procedure to reallocate that $400,000 or 100,000 money?
Well, again, I think if it's used on 98th Street, as I understand from bond counts, I mean, we use it on 98th Street.
Anywhere on 98th.
Which we're probably pretty safe, that we don't have to go through a, quote, reallocation process, as far as verifying that.
What councilman just said, he said anywhere on 98th Street, is that true? Or does it have to attach to?
No, I don't think, because the project was, was staff 98th Street, I would want to verify that with our bond count.
So we were.
The project was K 32, and we, when we approved those, and I believe we, again, we out, we're putting together that bond program of, again, it was around $1.3 million. We had these three things, finish Kansas Avenue, and then we put $250,000 on 102nd Street, again, to do preliminary, for basically, not quite fine, preliminary plans, right-of-way acquisition, and 98th Street from K 32 for about the first half mile, and do the same thing, preliminary plans and right-of-way acquisition. When we decided not to do the, the right-of-way acquisition, the question was, could we use those funds for this project or similar project in the engine, is that spot? I want to verify on 98th Street, but my understanding is that 98th Street is one of your streets that's, that can spend bond money, or which it is, and we allocated money to do a project within 98th Street, we may not have to go through the whole formal bond revision process. Could dollars be spent anywhere on 98th Street out of available bond funds? Yes, it's just which process would we have to use.
But if you use this 300, you would have to reallocate it with the 400 you don't have.
Basically, I mean, if you're not going to spend any of this money there, and you're going to spend it there, I, as I understand, that's, we're getting into grade waters, and I'm not a bond attorney, and I don't want to try to, could we put all this money over on 98th Street without a bond revision? I don't know that for a fact, but the direction I got when I asked about this, a year or so ago, was, could we do this under these circumstances? And the answer was yes, I asked a little bit about 98th Street, because I wasn't sure at that point what would, where that money going. I don't think we've made any decisions on that, that's why I haven't really brought it forward, because I think there's some question about, is that the best place to spend it, or is moving it up and expanding Kansas Avenue some amount, or any other road that might be made. I think that's a discussion that needs to happen.
What had transpired after, maybe after the vote, is we had that, that meeting, and we saw the opposition.
Which is why we didn't move forward.
Well, but we are. We're spending another $326,000 on 102nd Street.
But it's not racing west.
Or nowhere, it's, it's, it's all south.
Right.
It's sending Shaw.
I just don't know what we're, what we're getting.
I don't, I just don't understand what we're getting, that it knows where we need to put $326,000, so I don't think it's.
I think we should, I'd like to make the motion to allow the city manager to enter in the contract with Mackinac Construction for reconstruction of 102nd Street to Kansas Avenue, or Kansas Avenue to Richland, in the amount of $326,817.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the, approve the city manager to enter in the contract with Mackinac Construction, in the amount of $326,817. General further questions? With clerk please call roll.
Gillum?
Yes.
Malott?
Yes.
Schreiber?
No.
Stikes?
Stages?
No.
Adams?
Yes.
I, I would just add, just for clarity purposes, if you want to view my motion on the, obviously there will be inspection services through VHC Roads for, yeah, we estimate that amount at the, on a high not to exceed sign of 52,826.
You say 52,000?
52,826 is the not to exceed amount.
I'd like to make the motion to, uh, add the additional inspection services through VHC Roads for the amount of 52,826, not to exceed.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the, the contract with VHC Roads for inspection and then not to exceed 52,826 for the, uh, Kansas Avenue to Richland project. With the clerk, please call.
Gillen?
Yes.
Malo?
Yes.
Schreiber?
No.
Stages?
No.
Adams?
Yes.
And I'd like to just point out, the reason I make this motion is because we have been discussing this for a long time. And I think that it's basically a turnkey operation right now that can get started pretty quick and be done. And I don't disagree that 98th Street needs some work. We got a lot of streets around here that need work and I, I mean, I'm sorry, but that's just what I feel about. I think we need to consider 98th Street in our budget for this year.
I think maybe part of the process, uh, for even upon the next meeting, what we can do is bring back kind of a breakdown on the outstanding bond funds and where they're allocated to.
Yeah, that would be good.
And you can see what's available in there and kind of what we, I say adequate, so what it was earmarked for, maybe that's the better word to use. Uh, and then once we know if there's direction, then we can give further guidance on what's the best process.
Thank you, Mike.
So we'll, we'll do that for the next council.
Next item on the general will be Mayor Manner presenting a presentation regarding 2018 annual budget planning process.
So I'm going to step up here, Mayor. Passing out a presentation here. Seems like we never get out of this process, but we're about to start the budget process again. Uh, and so really tonight is just really getting us started in that mode one more time. Uh, and at the next meeting, you'll get our, our audit report, uh, but we'll use some of that information. We've got the preliminary, but we just don't have the formal documents here and the auditor could not make it until the next meeting. And the auditor's report really is a report to the council. They work for the council and not for the staff. So, uh, I think it's always important that they make that presentation. Uh, the positive news is, uh, we, we, for the most part, in all of our fun, all of our funds are positive. And for the most part, we either met or exceeded what we estimated the 2017 fund balance to start at. So, uh, the only one that was really off at all was the street fund. And I think it was around $4,600 less than what we estimated. So all in all, uh, pretty good. Uh, again, you know, our, our kind of, uh, I don't know if that, our, our vision that we passed a couple of years ago during the workshop that this group was part of is that Edwardville is a proud and thriving community that cares, communicates, collaborates, and celebrates together. Uh, we certainly try to keep that in mind when we're doing budgets and other things, uh, even like this weekend for cleanup day. I think that's one of those things where, uh, we kind of did all of those. And so we do try to keep that in mind when we're going through this. Uh, as you recall, we had six, uh, six or seven, six critical success factors. I'm not going to read all of those, uh, but I think, again, we try to use these as we move forward. And oftentimes, as you know, during, uh, presentations of items, we'll try to see how this engages, uh, with what we're trying to propose. Uh, you know, again, from funding issues to, to long-term planning and some of the things that we certainly have talked about and worked on over the years. Uh, some of these aren't carryovers from our former strategic plan that, that for the most part were very similar to what this strategic plan has. Uh, just a little bit of those that we, that we're kind of focused on this year in 2017. Uh, some of those we talked about tonight, but it's continuing our road construction maintenance. Uh, one of our goals has been to try to get basically all of our neighborhoods touched, uh, with paving since we started really getting on that about five years ago, I guess, when funding started to get better. Uh, we pretty much touched on all of those neighborhoods. In my neighborhoods, I mean that there's a series of, of homes coming onto an interior street and out. I know we have a lot of homes on our thoroughfares, you know, north, south, east, west thoroughfares. Not to suggest that they're not neighborhoods, but they're not traditional in that sense of a street that comes in and have streets off of it, like Williams' Farms or Castle Rock or places like that. So we've pretty much touched on all of those with the exception of Rock Bridge, which will be hopefully paving here in the near future on those proposal. And the area kind of High Street and, uh, that area kind of, as we refer to as up on the hill, Fifth Street, High Street, Sixth and Seventh Street, I guess it is Seventh Street to repay that area. That will then kind of finish out that we've got our neighborhoods touched all throughout the community. And so that's one of our, our goals. Uh, again, we, we did do some things such as our recent efforts. We'll see if Shawnee and the, and the blow patch, I think, uh, that was a good process. Uh, you know, it's an expensive machine. I'm not sure that's something we have either the manpower for on ourselves or the resources. You have to do that, but it's certainly something that we'll, we'll look at. Obviously, we spent a lot of time in 2016, 2017, uh, working on the Village South at Edwardville project. Uh, I know all of us spent a lot of time on that, a lot of discussions and, uh, we see dirt moving. So, uh, that's, that's positive. Uh, in the fire department, again, some of the things there, uh, if you remember, we, we budgeted for this Ucap at medical dispensary that could acquire some place. Uh, we ended up, I provided some rescue education tools, came out of special sales tax fund, which is what it was designed for. So we have done that. Um, you know, we've been working on code. Some of those we've done, uh, recently, like personnel and getting some of our things set up ahead of schedule. For example, as we start to have connections to the sewer systems, we now have some fees in there. Uh, probably for the first time in some amount of time, we have our, all our boards are fully represented. So we don't have any open vacancies as I understand with any of our boards. Uh, some of that was with the planning commission and the, and putting the board of zoning adjustment together. And that has worked. We've done that once this year where we filled a planning, uh, board of zoning adjustments meeting. And subsequent to that meeting, then we went straight into the planning commission meeting, working just as I'm supposed to. Uh, and even recently, we have the RFQ app to talk about our building facilities and those types of things. I will say we've gotten quite a bit of positive feedback so far on that. I mean, we're getting a lot of interest in that. So we'll see where, where that goes. It's still got a process to go through.
Did they go out through the same program that our bid went out?
We did not use that. I'm not, I mean, you can, you can put bids out through the planning room. Because that's more of a, really a request for qualifications. What we, what we did use is we used WindIDC because they have partners, architects primarily, some construction build type firms. We used the KCK Chamber List, uh, and then just some of it from past, you know, connections, people that said, hey, if you ever put this out. We got a proposal, our company, I think they were from Virginia, that said, hey, they got the proposal. They look forward to putting a proposal in. So I'm not sure, I don't know the company. It wasn't one we sent to. Uh, you know, maybe they're a parent company or somebody else. I'm not quite sure how they, how they received that. Uh, we may ask them if they become one of the ones we decide to look forward to. But we've had a very good response there. This is what I was referring to and I could have probably waited. So the numbers that says 2016 encumbered cash balance, these, while you haven't received the official audit, we had no changes to any of our fund balances through the audit this year, which I think is the first time we've ever had that. Thank you, Michelle. Or maybe we've had that before?
It's last year also.
Okay. Sometimes we'll have a little, but, but so all of our funds, we had no, no adjustments to that. And then 2017, this is where we thought these funds would start the year. And then we based our budget off of where we wanted the end of the year. But, you know, obviously the big ones in here is the general fund, uh, ended at about 818,000. We expected it to be about 674. So we have actually $143,000 more than we anticipated when we started 2017. Hopefully, we're still doing that closer to the end of 2017. But those, those are the kind of decisions we'll be making, you know, how we want to use those dollars in the future. So overall, again, uh, the cash bond account really is moot because cash bonds are, people pay the money in and then once they complete whatever it is with the court, they either get it refunded or it gets applied to their fines. More times than not, it gets applied to their fines and we don't have to actually send it back. They go from cash bond up to the general fund because that's where the court's at. And then the street fund, uh, was a little below projections, 400,000. Again, I think those are pretty good estimates. In, in reality, you're about 18 months out when you're doing these estimates. Uh, and you heard this before, and again, tonight's just really trying to prime the, prime the pump, so to speak. And no, I did not create that term. I take no responsibility for coming up with the term. Uh, it's been around for however long it's been around. Uh, but, you know, again, police department, I think you saw this, you know, everything for calls to service, like, you know, our incident reports, our arrests, et cetera, are up. Uh, and I'm sure if we ask either one of our chiefs, they're going to tell you 2017 has not shown a, a change in direction, uh, from these types of, of growth factors. So, uh, those things are still pretty much in play. The fire side, again, EMS calls are up, uh, eight percent over 2015. Uh, and the fire calls, those types of calls are also increasing, uh, and all of them have been up since the last five years. I mean, there's certainly a trajectory up. It's not a, not, not a leveled place. Uh, and then public works, uh, we don't have as many tracking mechanisms or haven't. As you know, we, uh, Ms. Snyder's put together a kind of, now can track her department on some of this. But again, I don't think there's too many things here we haven't talked about. Obviously, with the two-person crew that's dedicated to public works, that keeps them pretty stretched in when they're not just doing public works, but they're doing maintenance, they're doing, you know, grass and rights and laying all those. Uh, our community service officer will be retired here in the next couple of weeks. Uh, we are out, you know, recruiting for that position, so we'll fill it. Uh, 2018 will bring the sewer system to a wholesale agreement finally, we believe. Uh, everything's in place. But that'll shift a little bit of it, that we'll, we'll probably have staff member designated to sewer system, but we'll also have sewer revenues that today are actually being collected by another, you know, by the UG. But yet we still have all the responsibilities for our sewer system up to the point of connection to their system. So I think this will, uh, work out well. And mounted here, uh, we still have some equipment purchases to do that when we did the budget, we weren't sure how the year end was going to fall out. So we said, we're putting them in our budget, but we're going to wait to see how that works out. And I, I may have to let Zach cover some of this, but I'll just say this. So this will be the first budget with the new property tax led legislation. And I wish I could tell you how it's going to impact the budget, but as of today, they're still amending this, this bill. I mean, they got passed and then they proposed a bunch of amendments and some of them have stuck and some of them haven't. And it's all about what gets exempted or doesn't get exempted. What we know is in the exemption are public safety, police, fire, EMS. So those are, that helps. Though I haven't figured out how they get the dollars and the tax levy connected. But, uh, but now they're saying they're going to also exempt all employee benefits, which obviously that's huge from a city standpoint. Because if you take your police, your fire and employee benefits, you pretty much covered 80-plus percent for sure of your budget for the most part. So, um, go back for just a second. So, but basically what it's saying is that our levies are going to be capped out at some CPI, rolling CPI, which, uh, for this coming 2018, we don't get to go pick it. They, they basically have a formula and they send it to us and say, this is the CPI for the 2018 budget, which is 1.4%. So the easy way to look at that is, you know, you take our base budget, you add 1.4% on it, anything above and beyond that may require an election. But again, there's all these exemptions. And so there's complicated calculation and Zach's been trying to figure it out. He's working, he's working hard at it. It's not a lack of trying, it's a lack of, he's not alone, you know, trying to figure out how this whole thing's going to work. I mean, him and Michelle attended webinars on this and the league's done classes on it and, you know, I don't, I can't even, I was asking the chief counsel of the league, so exactly how does this work? Well, I don't know yet. So I, I, I think cities all across the state are going to be in the same place and it's going to make our process difficult. Again, this is kind of their formula. You take the 2017 and you, any tax levies you may have in another entity. So one of our questions is, so we don't necessarily have a separate taxing entity for the cemetery, but we allocate dollars to the cemetery and it goes to that other, quote, governmental subdivision. So some of these things are going to take some, take some work to get through. And if any of y'all learned anything about this and want to share, we'll be happy to, to take some education. Um, you know what? I don't even think I'm going to try to go through all of it. But, you know, we do have property that comes on that's new value. So those things that we did IRBs and they don't have tax abatement, and then when they come off the tax abatement, they come off to the tax roll, those are not included in this cap. So we kind of have a, a time here where we don't have many. We have one project coming off at the end of 2016, so it impacts the 2018 budget. Then we have a couple in 2019 that will hit the 2020 or 2021 budget. And then there's kind of a wall there. And then we have several of the ones that we approved a few years back to Van Trust and Leland Holdings, et cetera. Uh, so we'll have to go through figuring out how all this works once we get the numbers, which is another part of the problem is, right, the counties have traditionally given us our tax values July 1. The problem is if we're going to call an election, we're supposed to tell them by July 1 what that election map will be. So then they pushed it back 15 days. But of course, the counties didn't get to be part of it. So now they're trying to struggle to get all the things they used to have in two or three weeks for done in a short period of time. So it's a ripple effect. Uh, again, we talked about some of the, uh, revenues and expenditures and we'll go past those. But what we'll, what we'll, we have to look at, and it's in the calendar, is if we're going to, if we think we need an election, we'll make that determination by July 1. And then that changes the schedule of when we adopt our budget from typically August 25th to September 25th. So it adds time. The bad side about that is, right, now the county has to get all the tax bills prepared and out and they still have to get by December. So they just lost a month on their schedule to do all the things to get all that done. So again, I, it, it's just a, as many of us testified, it's, it's all great to have this tax levy, but you can suddenly explain how it's going to work first and not later and then we're related. So again, here's kind of our timeframe if we have no election. Uh, at the next meeting, we'd like to probably start having our first workshop and do that and focus on the revenue side of the house. Uh, I don't expect any I don't expect any significant changes there, to be quite honest. I mean, while we have the new development going on, likely there's, you know, there's not going to necessarily be new sales tax beginning of the year, there might be some at the end of the year. Most of the improvement's up there as far as the property tax and what goes into the tip, et cetera, won't really hit until the following, the next budget after that. So I'm not anticipating any significant changes in our revenue streams for 2018, but we'll look at that. All right, so now we get the valuations by June 15. Hopefully, we'll do another workshop at the meeting on the 26th. And that's probably the one we'll have to make some decision if we think there's going to need to be an election. Of course, part of the question is, what, if you don't have the election, then what happens? And we're trying to do it in November, which is after the budget's approved. But once again, that's kind of questionable. And as normal, we'll set a maximum budget. And that maximum budget is what gets used to ultimately set the mill levy. So fairly common process. I don't know if the next slide is, no. I couldn't remember if you did one with the election or without the election. So I think what I just want to kind of reiterate tonight, we're just getting started in the process. It's going to be a more complicated process related to how we have to get that information back to the state in setting the mill levies and things like that. I anticipate we'll probably be spending some time thinking about the tax levy and how that impacts us from a budget standpoint. But most of the other part of the process, I think we'll keep kind of the same format that we've done, try to focus on the big items, focus on the departmental broad needs and keep moving on that one.
I think some of the long story is that this budget seems to seem a little bit more accelerated than it has in the past because it's going to need to be the, we've lost two weeks as far as when we can turn in the budget to the county so that boot everything up. And then the window to get things done so notifications can be prepared. There's elections required, are all within a pretty tight window. So it seems like we're moving a little faster than we have in the past. It's what's accurate to say.
Is there any hot items on the board? Is that anybody going to have their evaluations blessed over on?
I'm not looking at any. I go on there and I look from time to time. I've seen some going up, which is a positive. I haven't heard anything really from the-
You've been asked or anyone?
Right, from the city, county. I mean, I will say that there's a general, and understand that the appraisers in each county and the state basically have some regulation by the state on how they do appraisals and whether the properties that they're appraising are accurate and what level of accuracy. So if we have, you know, new people, Kathy Briney is the new appraiser. And so I think there's been some discussion that generally the commercial market has been undervalued in going back down. Sure, people don't probably agree with that. But so I think if there's going to be adjustments, it's more likely on the commercial side and less on the residential side. Of course, certainly, somebody's going to come in with a residential appraisal that's up a lot. I feel it would be some commercial appraisal that's way down that probably shouldn't be. But that's the general word. As far as tax rate mill levies, again, UG's generally a little ahead of us typically. What I kind of hear just through the grapevine is that they, in fact, they're pretty public, the mayor's and Mayor Holland, they're pretty strong on saying they want to reduce the mill levy on the city side of the equation. And generally, no change on the county side. So our taxpayers, that doesn't necessarily have a positive impact relative to the county piece of the tax. That's generally what's been being said, you know, publicly, you know, some of the comments that are out there. They want to try to take some of the money that they receive, that they got back through the, you know, the legends and that that came back on tax rolls and put that money, a good portion of, towards property tax, really primarily on the city side. Happy answering. Really, right now, don't have much to say other than get ready and be thinking. And we're doing the same thing on our side, staff level. I've already seen like, you know, millions of great ideas that we need to do. So hit for more people and all that kind of good stuff. That's what they paid to do. They'd be working harder.
Mike, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Now you can sit down and give us some more.
Few things that I have, and we already talked about the budget workshop. So we do intend to do that prior to the next meeting at 6 o'clock so we can focus our time just on budget, which is typically what we've done. Instead of holding special meetings, we do budget workshops first. I think I already mentioned that the audit will be presented to you at the next meeting. But the fund balances that you get in your packet, let's say, 12/31/16, are accurate. It doesn't say audited yet because, so we receive it except the audit. They're not audited numbers, but the numbers are good. Just on the overall LTC sewer project, the lift station is here and being installed, the power portions are being put in place. And so the lift station itself will probably be ready to be activated in, I'm going to say, the next 60 days or so. Obviously, it doesn't have any flows going into it. But we kind of had that waiting period because we had to redesign around the power system. And there were some additional costs. Again, as you remember during the development discussions, the development agreement, there are good, it appears that probably all the additional costs associated with going from three phase back to single phase, we've covered it in the development, we're, by the development, not out of our bond, but to get paid for out of there, we get reimbursed. Cleanup Day, I know I was not here to enjoy it, but it looks like you all did a great job. I know Zach did a wonderful job of getting it all organized and getting it ready. And again, it looks like it was very successful. I think we filled up 11 containers. Maybe we didn't fill them quite as full, it looks like, which is not necessarily a bad thing because that way, things don't fly out of bins and injure people. Pardon, Michelle?
Correct.
Which is a good thing. We don't want people being injured while they're volunteering to try to do good things for the community. So I appreciate that, appreciate all of the volunteer. Fire department had staff come over and help as well. Public works people were there. I don't know if Ms. Schreiber was able to break down it.
Yes, she was.
She did. Okay, good.
She enjoyed it by all.
Sorry, I didn't get to enjoy those this year.
I thought that was required.
Well, it has become a tradition. Traditions are good. And then the last thing, just unless there's questions of something, I'll try to answer. But Memorial Day weekend is coming up this weekend. So City Hall will be closed officially on Monday. There will be, as we discussed, the way to prevent things, another mow and cleanup of the cemetery prior to the weekend, which is one of the things we kind of committed to try to make sure is done before the major holidays because they do obviously special events for Memorial Day, July 4th, Veterans Day. So it's on our calendar.
Thank you, Mike. Chief, the deal.
My newest fire was approved for July of last year. This first day of academy was today. It'll be 14 weeks, we'll be back. Several weeks in field training, so we'll have some refresher in the final phase to check out. So we'll have them back in 14 weeks, plus a few more weeks, plus they're brand new, they're still, every day's training for them. So, but we are, we're full staff based on our higher approval from last July. So no more recruiting right now. We are, Mr. Webber, I discussed the cop hire grant, which has resurfaced again. It was just announced. And thus, what that is, is really a progressive payment to hire new officers under community policing. So we would match a portion and they would give us some federal funds. And it's, you know, the 25, 50, and then 75. And on the fourth year, we pay 100%. So we're going to look at that, whether we are competitive or not. But we certainly want to try to look at that. One of the places we haven't been impacting is in our drug area. As we don't have the manpower to follow up that given our personal property concerns and our protective division. So it's one of the things we want to free somebody else up to focus on. So we've been steadily busy, just as we've been. 15 was our record year, 16, we beat that. So 17, we're staying just right on top of track. We are in click at a ticket. So if you see stats for citations issued, May tends to soar. A few years ago, we went to our digital ticketing system. It's all electronic. And they called me in June and said, did you stop using the system? And I said, well, no, we're still using it. But there was such a diverse number. It went so far down and they were just concerned that we stopped using it from May to June. So, but that is our click at a ticket program. Over the years, we've been awarded the top money for our participation, which has bought a lot of equipment. It's about $400,000 a year on average. We buy radars, we replace preliminary breath testing devices, and just a number of things that are into police vehicles that have to do with traffic, enforcement, and things like that. So it's been a really beneficial program. It is on overtime. The staff on overtime, it has to reimburse to the city. So we're in the middle of that. It's holiday season, so they're out and about and going out. So again, we're fairly busy. And hopefully, Officer Quimmin, who has reported first day, will do excellent use of it. Very tells that we're really excited to have him down there. So we'll be excited to have him back in about 14 weeks.
We also just would note that we have a court security officer again. So we had one and after he left, retired, I, we were filling in with officers. So they were having to fill in either on shift or stay on the shift and things. And so that didn't fill for, it works out 20, 25 hours a month. I don't remember what it is. Each court, the two court days plus a little more time there. So that's obviously a bit of that keeps, he's a certified person, but it keeps our cops on the streets and helps that happen. I think that's gone well, it's just gotten started.
Less expensive, for sure.
Yes.
Chief, thank you. Chief Webber, nothing to report. Thank you. All right, so we're standing.
I'll just be real brief. Public workers have been really busy with all of the special events. Obviously, as you know, that everyone participated in the April Days and the city cleanup this weekend and why, like, have our staff was there. And I just want to, you know, let everyone know that it does take time for the crews to stage that and clean up afterwards. So they're not out here with their routine maintenance items because, you know, we're working on those special events. And another thing that we talked about earlier was the cemetery and the work that we had five people doing up there this week. It took us about 25 hours to back level and concede 26-plus grays. I mean, I driven through numerous times previously. And to tell you the truth, we really don't realize how things are in such poor condition until you're up there. So I think what we did this week in the cemetery made vast improvements. So hopefully, our community will be happy with that, with what they did. And also, as Mike indicated, we have a CSL position advertised. And hopefully, we'll get that filled and we'll continue to, you know, work on the works.
Amy, thank you. Everyone, if you could turn around.
Make sure you thank your firefighters through the, they really helped us a ton. They did the heavy lifting and I didn't have to do very much there. Really appreciate it. And that, wonderful job on that. Thank you so much for that. I'm not disagreeing, Chuck, off the street on 98th Street. I'm not disagreeing with that at all because we definitely need that. But I think that we have worked on that 102nd Street project for a long time. And I just didn't want to see that get sidetracked because it was already arranged and pretty much taken care of. But I would be, and I would like to press the 98th Street repairs because they definitely need it. That's where I stand on that. My explanation.
Okay. Jason? Yeah, once again, City Cleanup Day was very, very successful. I think we could probably do that a couple of times a year and fill up all the dumpsters. And I know that's probably going to be one of my things I think I'll bring up on the budget planning for session here is there a possibility of doing that a fall cleanup as well? Because it does great things for a community and get that trash out of the neighborhood and out of the homes and into where it should be. And I want to thank everybody that came out, whether it be citizens and also council. We have four council members there. We have a lot of city staff there. We have public safety there. It just, it just be to see kind of how everybody pulled together and pulled off an event like that. And it really didn't feel like it was a daunting task to fill up. How many dumpsters did we have filled up there?
We filled up probably nine and a half that we did over the hours that we were there. And then some of our more entrepreneurial residents took the eleven going over the weekend. So. Plus, we had metal recycling. We had a 40-yard scrap metal that we filled completely up. Probably need to look at, maybe get two of those next year. And then the electronic waste, we filled up all five of the palletted boxes. So that's, that was success.
Yeah, that's true. The scrap metal, we started putting scrap in the dumpster because we didn't have any more room.
Yes, we'll start that. And I think also, too, and part of, we have budget planning coming up for the next fiscal year. But I think we also need to have some budget planning around bonds, bond sales in the future. Because obviously, we have the study that's going on looking at our facilities. We do have additional road infrastructure for our repair improvements to be considering. And just looking at it more of a longer-term bonding plan of how we might be able to consider some of those projects and how the debt might be able to layer in future years.
And our financial advisor has that, has done some of that in the past? Even if, you know, if you did $2 million every third year, more about the dollar amounts, how that would layer out, you know, estimated costs and things. So we can, you know, probably within the next day or two, we'll see if we can, put some scenarios together, at least give us a form of discussion.
I got it, again. Thank you.
I do want to thank the firefighters for their work, almost human's work. Made it a lot easier than the rest of them. And also, also the public works guys with the skid loader was huge. Those sofas that sat out in the rain the night before were really heavy. And so the skid loader was valuable.
The hybrid ones, too.
Yes.
That's wasted, I don't think.
And part of the reason that it didn't stick over the top of the dumpsters, they did a nice job of smashing down and the stuff didn't inside you. Earlier, I mentioned Cemetery Four Memorial Day. The Cemetery Board takes those holidays, the Fourth of July Memorial Day, extremely seriously. They're very, very proud of their services and so forth. And unfortunately, I'm always out of town on Memorial Day. If you have the chance to go, it's very worthwhile, very well done. And you might, if you see one of them on the Cemetery Board, you can end them. That is, those are their babies at that point in time. A huge amount of pride in the cemetery now looks during the holidays. Recognize that because they plan all year on these two events.
I was going to ask about, how did we come to the savings of $106,000 on that project? What did we cut out or what allowed us to go? I looked back on my notes back, you know, in March of 2016, 15 months ago. And I had $492,000, which-
You're talking about, I just-
102nd Street.
102nd Street.
So what changed that allowed us to save $106,000 on your, with your numbers of 432?
I'm not sure I have an exact answer for that. I don't, I mean, obviously, engineers typically start off higher and they built in some 15%, 10% to 15% early in the project because they don't know what maybe some of the things are going to be. But we didn't really change any. I mean, no part of the project did the length of the project or pavement thicknesses or curving. Actually, I think we ended up adding two driveway approaches in the process because coming down Richland, we actually went a little bit farther down Richland than initially was planned because there's those two driveways for the two corner houses. So we got past the driveways with pavement. One of the driveways on 1st Street is going away, which is the house that would be on the southwest corner. So they have two drive, they had two entrance points and they did away with the one.
How far down Richland are we going? How far down Richland are we going?
It's just, if you know the two, the two-corner houses, they're driveways. There's an approved driveway and the other one says there's a gate right there.
$108,000.
180.
Yeah, at 300, 400 feet, something I think it is, from the corner. Now, the curving will stop a little bit short of that, just because you already have inlet pipe, you know, under the driveway pipes that are already there existing, and so if we try to carry the curving down farther, we get into more expense, because we probably have to put more inlet box in there, but... We made no significant changes to the project's schedule.
Was a pretty good savings.
Yeah, I think we got, and I'm sure, you know, Matt and anyone, you know, like any good bids, when they look at it and go, "Oh, we're here, and these guys are here," you always go, "Oh, how did I bid this?" But, I mean, that's just, that's part of the market. But, I mean, I think our bids, you know, ranged...
Highest one was 5...
544, which, you know, they were probably going to have to sub a lot out. But most of them were, you know, pretty close, I think, in the engineers' estimated, you know, below the estimated range of the engineers, and certainly we had, I mean, we've dealt with almost every one of these companies. I would say with the exception of, I don't think we've ever had a project done by Kansas Heavy Construction, but we've used all of the others at some point or another. Framin and Dale Brothers have generally done smaller projects, you know, concrete work or some small pavement, so...
So, back on that, and I had made a note back in 15 months ago, about 33 years since 98th Street north of Kansas Valley hasn't had any maintenance done, and I think we're still at the same response 15 months later. That's all I have.
I mean, other than, I mean, obviously, the patching, recent patching, and probably bits of patching, there hasn't been any... I would agree that all of those roads, pretty much our north-south, what I would call the old county roads, have, for the most part, had limited maintenance.
Chris?
I'll recap, too, about the City Cleanup Day. The public works employees and firefighters, they were, it was, I think everybody will remember this, we were a little bit of a lull, we were all standing around, and I saw some firefighters kind of hurrying through the dumpsters, and there were some neighbors, a couple blocks down, all carrying some stuff, walking it, so I think one of the public works employees took the truck family out, helped them out, and then brought it all up here, which, boy, if we could go around the city, where do you stop? But I do agree with Jason, I don't know if that could be a second, you know, twice-a-year type thing. I think all in all, a lot of citizens thanked us and thought, you know, where can you go and pull up with a truckload of stuff, and everybody uploads it for you, and you drive off, so...
I need eight and I 70.
Yeah. Eight and 94.
You have to load it yourself there.
I've seen them hit the brakes and load it pretty fast.
The day started out a little bit of rain, like I said, if we want any rain, we'll plan a function. Lot of wet, heavy junk, and a lot of spiders. I didn't see any snakes this year, so that was good. Anyway, it was, it was, didn't feel like work, it was, I know, a bit of a... And Michelle, and I know everybody included, working on the budget. Thank you for all your hard work, and that's all I have to say.
I really don't have anything more to... I've already expressed my appreciation to Chief Widdow and even the firemen, firefighters that day, so I appreciate them there. They really did make it a lot easier. With all that, we...